Welcome to the open session, portion of the September 1, 2020 Selectmen's Meeting. Previous to this, we did have a short executive session where we discussed some matters regarding collective bargaining with the Light Department Union and police dispatchers. And now we'll begin this open session in our usual fashion with a pledge allegiance to the flag and a moment of silent reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Thank you. Tonight, we have one meeting with Mr. Mazuko et al., Mr. Collins and Company regarding light department finance. And you have a presentation, Mr. Mazuko?
We do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we're joined by Jim Collins, Superintendent of the Light Plant, as well as Dan Morrissey and Kevin Shaughnessy. And I believe Chris Pollard, our Light Department Attorney is on the line with us as well. I'm going to go ahead and put a presentation up on the screen. We do have a presentation for this evening as we're working to bring more information to the light commissioners. And we're going to be talking tonight a little bit about some of the broader topics with municipal light departments, finance, and some suggestions for the board going forward. We are, we have at least one new light commissioner and some light commissioners with less time on the board. So we just wanted to make sure we reviewed some of these topics for the board and for the public. Christina, could you do me a favor and mute the mic for anyone who is? There we go. Never mind. The background noise had, has disappeared. So if you give me just a second here, we're going to go ahead and get started. So we'll cover these things in fairly quick contact, Mr. Chairman, and then if you would, at the end, that's when we can take any questions and have a discussion. So what should be actually the FY 20 review, just for the board's overall knowledge, was a very good year for the light department, but there are some headwinds approaching as we go into future years with changes to the industry. In particular, what helped us have a good year this year, our peak shaving generators contributed to approximately $600,000 in savings. Those are the generators that we install and use when we hit peak. So this was the prior fiscal year. Those were huge, huge savings as we closed out last fiscal year. We sold our renewable energy credits, which in a given year oftentimes generate, can generate hundreds of thousands of dollars for the light department, which flows back indirectly to the town. We will not be able to do that in few years as legislative action is changing, requiring us to retire instead of sell them. We had good capacity credits. And in the last fiscal year, both Moderna's battery storage project, as well as them coming online last year as a customer, has been very helpful. So all of those things came in, again, this is FY 20 review, to present a very positive FY 20 for the board, for the town. So the topics we're going to cover tonight in brief depreciation, our rate shock fund, operating account or lack thereof, a little bit about purchase power, how we go about rate setting, our credit rating and some challenges we're facing there, and then the plan for when we have the large light department bond paid off beginning in FY 24. So just to review for members at home, depreciation as it relates to our municipal light plants is the calculated loss in value of assets of the municipal light plant annually, which is then rate via rates to ensure regular investment and replacement of plant assets and emergency funding available to ensure that our utility operations never cease. So all depreciation is, is we take the annual depreciation on our value and we're required to raise that in rates to continue to invest in our plant. The actual language from the statute, ordinary repairs, extensions, reconstruction, enlargements, or additions. Currently depreciation sits at just over $5 million. We use a different calculation regularly when we look at that, but that's where the account is today. There's money added to it every year, but of course we spend out of it for capital, routine items such as vehicle, equipment, poles, lines, transformers, building repairs, enhancements. We did two years ago, take $1.4 million for depreciation to buy the new building on access road. That was to reduce the overall amount we needed to borrow. We have a number of projects that we know would likely come out of depreciation if not borrowing projects. An example is replacing some of the old switchgear at one of the substations. That project is looking at roughly a $5 million cost. If we were to completely lose the substation, we could be looking at upwards of a $20 million cost. Now, while that's a somewhat unlikely scenario, it can happen, and it's something we always are going to want to be prepared for. Depreciation is not for payroll or administrative costs, so it never goes into salaries or overtime or benefits. Depreciation statutorily required, so we're required by law as a municipal light plant in Massachusetts to have depreciation. And it's critical because we think about our electric utility beyond everything else. It's absolutely essential and vital to life. A major loss of a substation that could render large swaths of the town without power for weeks or months. Again, it sounds unlikely and we know we have a fantastic light department, but a year ago, nobody would have predicted a pandemic. So these things can happen and the provision of light, of electric service is absolutely essential to life. We tend to weather storms better than most other communities because the power stays on longer, it's more reliable, and it gets back on quicker, which is everything much easier when you have power. And one point that's always worth noting, depreciation is actually also generally what pays for immediately during and after a storm. That's when we see a lot of damage and we need funds on hand to be able to make sure we can pay for repairs to that damage. And sorry, current depreciation, they said about $5.1 million. Our rate shock fund, which is another critical component of our financial picture, is often referred to as rate stabilization. It's designed to be utilized in the event of a shock to rates whereby a large increase in rates will lead to a substantial inability of customers to pay or cause widespread default on residential and commercial customers. So that could be a serious or substantial loss of a power provider. So that is somebody that we purchase power from, whether it's just a localized plant incident or a wider regional issue where all of a sudden power costs going up 20, 30, 40, 50%. We could have an issue where we no longer have the ability to collect rates. We never really thought of the reliability of the postal service until now, but we know there's changes going on there. And again, in the context of a pandemic, these things take on more meaning that what happens when an emergency and what's our ability to cope with an actual emergency? It's a concern because not only do we want residential and commercial customers to not have to face in the short term a 50 or 60% rate increase due to some catastrophic loss, but the town itself has to make its monthly power purchase payments, and we always need to be prepared for that for the community to have power. Our monthly electric costs average around $4 million. And a substantial price shock due to, as I said, a catastrophic supplier loss, damage to the grid, local or otherwise, or market shocks could cause a substantial power increase. Now, if we saw a 50% rate increase that was going to persist for six months to a year, six months of absorbing that would be around $11 million cost. We don't have anything remotely in that in rate stabilization, which you can see is at $4.6 million. So our ability to prevent a major rate shock is actually quite limited. And that's a concern. It's a concern that our, that S and P auditors have raised. And it should be a concern for us as we look forward to how do we protect the community, the light department, and of course, our rate payers? If there was some sort of a substantial rate shock, our ability to absorb and manage that is quite limited at this time. One issue that we're going to discuss in the next year or two in more depth is a operating account for the light department. Currently, the light department doesn't operate with any cash on hand or an operating account. And we're really the only light department in Massachusetts that does it this way. We combine all of our funds into the town's general fund, and this was cited as a recent, one of the many reasons we recently received a credit downgrade. So we need to work towards building an operating account. And one of the reasons, one of the ways to think of, well, what's an operating account is if you look at the light department as a business entity, we don't actually have a business checking account. We have an in and out budget that pays just what's budgeted, and there's no float in there. So the light department doesn't have its own fund to be able to pay all of its expenses out of it and put all of its revenues in. It's all combined into the town's general fund, which has some benefits overall to the town, to the tax rate, but puts the utility at quite a disadvantage. That level that you're targeting over time, and this is not something that's going to happen this month or next month or in the next year. This is sort of a 10-year goal, is you want two or three months' worth of bills in that float account, if you will. And one of the reasons is, there's a couple of reasons. One is to put us in a better financial position, to make sure we're protecting the rate payers and the reliability of our electricity and our electric service. If the town ever didn't have the cash on hand to make its monthly payment, which is a possibility, these are large, large payments, that would trigger us to have to keep a much larger amount of cash on account with our major electric suppliers. So one example is we have one supplier that if we were ever late on our bill, we would need to go to keeping close to $10 million on account with ISO. Now, on the one hand, you could say, well, so we're going to raise rate money from rate payers just to keep it in account. We can do one of two things. We can take rate payer money and give it to somebody else, or we can at least take rate payer money and let it benefit the rate payers through a better credit rating and lower costs. The utility is different than general government services. So there is a proposal, part of our light department bond payoff plan, to how we can start building an operating account with the understanding that we need to go in this direction, but this is a long-term plan. It's probably going to take us 10 years to get to where we want to be. But the light department has been operating for close to a century, and we're looking forward to the next 100 years as I continue to steal that slogan from the skating club. But we're looking forward to the next century in electric power. I want to, speaking of power, I want to change gears here a little bit and talk a little bit about purchase power. And as the board members are aware, that's that line in the budget. It's called purchase power, purchase of electricity, and that's the budget line that we utilize to purchase our monthly power. But there's often a lot of misconception about what it actually means. And I still want to make sure we can disassociate that purchase power line in the budget from rates in everyone's minds. And there's a reason for that. That purchase power line fluctuates based on how much energy we're actually purchasing and then selling and using. So that number could go up. It doesn't necessarily mean that rates are going to go up. And the reason is that it just may mean that we're purchasing more power. A new commercial client coming to town that could have an annual million or $2 million electric bill, which is always a boon for us, that ends up being something that purchase power may go up to accommodate that, but that doesn't mean that the rates are going up. Now, purchase power going down doesn't necessarily mean that rates are going to go down because it could mean that we're purchasing less power, but we're also selling less power. That purchase power number could go up, and if it's a volume increase, that could mean rates actually go down. So I know oftentimes when we look at that number in the budget, we say, Kate went up $6 million. Are you raising rates, you know, 27%? And the answer is no, it's just based on partially the cost of power, but also the volume of power. Conversely, people may see that number go down $3 million, say, oh, great, the rates are going to go down 8 or 10%. That's not necessarily the case. We are purchasing less power because we are using less power. So it's an important figure in the budget, but it is just our budgeted amount for our monthly purchase of power. And at least when you're conceptually thinking about rates, we want to disassociate the purchase power number with the rates because it's not always directly related. And I know that can be a little confusing, so when we wrap up, we can ask any, we can answer any questions on that as well. I want to talk briefly about rate setting. And Chairman Plasko and I talked that over the next year, we're going to have a lot more light commissioner meetings, if you will, where we can dive into some of these topics deeper. But when we go about setting rates, it's never an arbitrary process. It's actually a very strictly governed process. We determine the total revenue requirements of the light department. We figure out what the cost of service is for the different classes that we offer, and then we allocate those costs to the classes, and then that becomes what you pay as an electric rate. Once we're there, you can factor in any programmatic or policy decisions, but to be honest with you, those are very limited in Massachusetts. And what I mean by that is other states have the ability to grant special rates for special programs. They'll, for instance, have an economic development rate where to lure a business in, they can say, all right, well, we'll sell you power real cheap for your first year or two or the entire time you're here. We're not allowed to do that in Massachusetts. Under the Department of Public Utilities regulations, we cannot sell power for less than it costs us to produce it and sell it. So we can create rate classes based on specific rates and the needs and the cost of that rate class. But we never are able to sell power for less than it costs us because that just shifts the cost elsewhere, and it's not allowed in Massachusetts. So those sort of programmatic or policy decisions are actually very limited. Now, this chart here is a more complicated chart than it needs to be, but it just sort of visualizes how we go about figuring out the cost of our electricity. We don't just pick a number out of the hat, and it's not something similar to a budget where we say, well, it's just we project $50 million over here, so make it $50 million over here. It's quite a complex process to decide how we allocate the rates and to make sure that we're allocating it based on the actual cost of the service that we're providing among large, commercial, industrial, residential, et cetera. So the other topic we want to talk about with rate setting is there's a danger in avoiding rate setting just to avoid rate setting. Now, nobody likes to say that we're raising rates, and it's never a popular decision. However, each year that we don't have a rate increase when we should have had a rate increase, increase, the loss to the light department that compounds over time is substantial. So what I mean by that is if we one year said, we don't want to raise rates by 1%, that's quates to about $450,000 in revenue for the light department. But we've lost the ability over the next decade to collect that $450,000 annually. So a 10-year decision to not raise rates 1% in one year can cost us $4 million over that time period. So it's not an annual, what is it this year, and just skip it this year and it won't have an impact. It always has an impact down the road. When we don't raise rates when we need to, it bleeds available fund balances, reduces operational funds available, or otherwise comes out of the budget. We're not allowed to raise rates just to raise rates, nor are we allowed to cut rates just to cut rates. You have to project out what the actual cost is. But if we're not raising rates by deferring maintenance or not by putting certain money in fund balances, that ultimately costs us more in the long run. In July 2018, we did raise rates about 8%. It was quite a jump, but we'd had several years without raising rates. An easy calculation, if you go back over that time period, if we had raised rates each year by a small amount, we figured we probably could have had the total rate increase around 6% over that time period as opposed to an 8% increase and sort of walloping it right at the end. The delaying rate increases when our costs go up and they often go annually will always cost our customers more in the long run. Now, that being said, we don't want to raise rates if we don't have to. We're not looking for reasons to raise rates. But delaying it when we should be raising rates will always cost our customers more in the long run. And I made the point earlier, and I just want to clarify, we cannot set rates below the cost of power or our cost. It's a DPU regulation, so that's not something we're statutory allowed to do. Moving on to a discussion on our credit rating, Northern Light recently suffered a credit downgrade. And among the standard and poor's concerns were a high level overall of turnover to the town. That's the amount of money the light department returns to the town. While we certainly understand S and P's concern, this is our business and we're entitled to do as we see fit with the net proceeds, and we're not likely to change that anytime soon. We do not have an operating account, which is common. We have an overall high debt level to revenues. Now, that will change after that large light department bond is paid off. And the reason it's a concern is that large bond doesn't positively impact plant value. Whereas if we were to borrow money for an investment, that's always looked at as an investment, we're acquiring something, an asset is appreciating. Unfortunately, that large bond from a rate case 20 years ago does not actually add to the value of our plant. So it ends up really making us have negative equity or making it look like the light department has more debt than it should because that debt is not tied to an asset. And they have expressed concerns over inputting rate increases when needed and making sure that we're not avoiding raising rates when we should be raising rates because it always ultimately costs your customers more down the road. As I mentioned, the light department has its own credit rating, which has an impact on borrowing. But the credit rating for the light department is different from the town in that it can have an impact on our rates, both directly and indirectly. We are rated on our creditworthiness for our purchase power contracts. Operating cash on hand and credit rating have an impact on the rates we're able to secure as well as the amount of money we need to deposit on contracts. So as I said earlier, we can hold our own money that our rate payers benefit from, or we can give our own money to some other entity to hold on to with a larger deposit on the account. It's further important because the light department's credit rating, in addition to being tied to its ability to borrow in the both direct and indirect impact on rates, it's tied to the town's credit rating. So a further degrading of the NLD credit rating will ultimately impact and reduce the town's credit rating, and that'll lead to millions more in projects for large and small project. The town always has money borrowed for infrastructure, and the credit rating can not only impact electric and water rates, electric and broadband rates, water and sewer rates, but the tax rate for decades to come. If you think of the context of the middle school coming up, we know we're going to have at our share 50 to $70 million project in the next couple of years. The town's credit rating on that is critical. There's no way we can have a good town credit rating and a poor light department credit rating. And every year we borrow for certain capital projects, so while interest rates are low, we want that good credit rating to get the advantage of the cheapest interest rates we can because we'll always be borrowing money for infrastructure. But the key metric here being that it's not just about the borrowing cost with the light department. It has that cost on rates. Beginning in FY 24, we're going to pay off that large light department bond, which will finally allow us to make some financial progress to put the business functions where we want them to be, to put the utility in the position we want it to be financially, into legitimately slow rate increases. Now, I know I've spent the last 15 minutes saying we have to raise rates and we have to raise rates, and now I'm talking about slowing rate increases. We never want to raise rates if we don't have to, but when we have to and we avoid it, we're just kicking the can down the road. But it's critical for us to plan now to align our capital planning, potential market changes, and new projects along with stabilizing our light finances and enhancing the light department credit rating, fiscal position, and the reliability of our infrastructure. What you see in the screen here is sort of the draft plan, if you will, and we're several years out for this for how we would restructure some of the light department's finances after we go about paying off the large note. Now, I'll take a moment to explain this. The number up here is the amount of revenue available when that bond is paid off. It starts in FY 24 where we pay off the majority of the bond, and then there's a smaller portion of it, about a quarter of it, that's paid off in FY 25. So that's why the amount available each year is different. Now, that number first goes up and then descends because we're planning on rate relief each year. And as a result, once you've allocated that portion of the budget to rate relief, you lose that going forward because you've already absorbed that level of cost. That's why the amount available, if you will, decreases year by year. The way that rate relief works is we free up that amount of money in the budget out of the debt service payment. And the first half a million dollars in FY 24 of cost increases that would otherwise lead to a rate increase, we know we can absorb. Now, it's possible that year we could have 2 million, 3 million, 4 million dollars in costs, or costs could go down $100,000, then you might actually see downward pressure on the rates. Same thing going in FY 25, 26, 27, 28, 29. We're looking over the course of this process to do $4 million worth of rate relief from FY 24 through FY 30. Now, transfer to rate shock fund would be a series of transfers beginning in FY 24 and going through FY 29 into the rate shock fund. This combined with small action each year, transfer some money to rate shock, will hopefully at the end of the period, get that rate shock fund by FY 30. So we're talking long-term here, but it's time we start really looking out down the road. But it will get that rate shock fund where we want it to be. The seven-year investment period proposed here would show about $9 million going into rate shock fund. We talked earlier with rate, where rate shock is currently at about $4.5 million. So hopefully with other additions, we'll be close to where we are by FY 30, and then we no longer need to worry about that. That's when we can truly start to look at even more rate relief once we're there and set, absent an emergency, which you never, of course, plan on. We're looking at two situations or two processes for building up our operating account. And one of them is we may look at an adjustment to the rate in future years to be able to do this, that we'd be able to then shave off. But also as part of this bond payment, we'll finally have the financial flexibility to build that operating account to ensure we don't need to keep more cash on hand with any of our vendors, and again, help build that credit rating. We're also looking at finally allocating a capital budget. Years ago, the light department had operating funds towards capital. They were over time reduced to mitigate rate impacts and to mitigate the increase of some light department bond. So we'd like to eventually return to that, some of the recurring capital every year, vehicle stock and a few other things that we know we have to purchase, facility repairs, poles, transformers, that we're paying for some of that out of capital, allowing depreciation to build up to a higher level where we know we have it there as an emergency, and we might be able to take on bigger projects without having to borrow. And that always has a short-term impact on your depreciation account. But as an example, there's other utilities in our rate class. The average depreciation is around $7 or $8 million. We're at around 5. Some have as high as 10 or 11 or $12 million. So if we have a $5 million project with only $6 million depreciation, we would never pay cash for it and drain the entire account. But if that depreciation account over time can build up to $12, $14, $16 million, you can take on a $5 or $6 million project every 10 years or so and pay cash for it and get it done without having to necessarily borrow. We also are getting closer to that ability of what the worst possible case scenario should be for a depreciation account or for a depreciation cost. If we've lost a total substation or something like that. You'll notice the total at the bottom just totals the numbers up between what we're reducing and what we're balancing. So this plan over the course of that seven fiscal years, and this is subject to adjustment, we're not even going to get there until FY 24, would allow us to do some substantial rate reduction, transfer to rate shock fund, which would get our rate shock fund where it needs to be. We'd have an established operating account in an operating capital budget within the light department's budget, which would be helpful in building depreciation. So all these different items stack on each other. And that capital budget would allow us to undertake a lot of the different engineering and design projects and look into different things we've always talked about doing. But then we say, gee, it's really, we don't have the financial flexibility to do so. As I've said, it's important to plan now for fiscal changes when the large bond is paid off in fiscal 24. I covered some of the high points. It'll allow us to bring rate shock to an acceptable level, build our cash on hand, and finally have budgeted capital as well as providing about $4 million in rate relief to customers over a seven-year period. But this is essential to meet our financial targets. And as I said, the financial health of our utility needs to be a top priority. There's no business with weak financials that ultimately can deliver consistent, reliable, safe, and cost-effective service to customers, which is what we're looking to do. So as we look in the horizon, there's going to be a lot of challenges and opportunities for the electric industry in the next decade. And we want to make sure we're in the best financial position possible to address some of these challenges. Distributed energy resources or the small production of small energy in different areas is going to be challenging. We know that there are going to be a lot of climate change-related grid impacts and an increase in storm events. State and federal regulations on green energy, while positive for the environment, are not always positive for the balance sheet. And the challenge for us is the better that balance sheet is, the cheaper our services are, and the more funds that are available directly and indirectly for all of our services, including education. Battery storage is going to be an industry game changer. That may be one of those things that's good for society and for grid reliability, but may not necessarily be good for electric utilities. Although we're seeing ways we can do battery projects and shave peak costs, which is very beneficial. The electrification of transport is coming one way or another. That's going to have a substantial impact on both the industry and the grid at a local level. So the next 10 to 20 years is going to be a period of disruption in the industry. And to prepare for that, putting ourselves in a better financial position, really the best thing that we can do going forward. I will stop sharing my screen now as I'm sure everyone was thoroughly entertained by my presentation there. But I would turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, and the light commissioners for any questions you have or a discussion on any of these topics. With, we have the light department team here as well to answer any questions that you or any of the other commissioners may have.
Thank you for that update and presentation about making the department's finances more stable going forward in the long term. Anybody, any members have any questions for Mr. Mazuko or Mr. Collins or anyone else who's joined us this evening? Mrs. Donahue? Helen, Mrs. Donahue, your mic is off. There you go.
I'll say it. Sorry about that. So it's not really a question, it's a point, and the comment, the comment is that there is so much information that you just presented, Mr. Mazuko. And that is, you covered a lot of tropics. And what I think that we have to do when we have our meetings is address more specific topics. Because there are lots of ideas there, and you've been working on this full-time probably for a long time. But that's a very, very, very broad presentation you just made, you know?
Yes, that was the goal, to sort of present a wide range of topics broadly, and then as the year progresses and going forward, the board can decide which of these topics they really want to dive into.
Anyone else? Mr. Ja?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, a lot of really, really good information. Tony, Jimmy, Dan, and Kevin love to see it. It provides a path going forward that we can, that can choose as needed and yet deal with all the issues related to the light department and especially the finances and the contribution to the town. A few questions if I can, Mr. Chairman. One is, Tony, when you list all those different types of accounts, the rate shock, capital, rate relief, operating account, depreciation, are there any caps to those accounts?
You know, I don't think there's a statutory cap on any of the accounts. I'd have to take a look, but not that I'm aware of. There's, it's not similar to our debt service or our stabilization funds where there's technically a statutory limit. I don't think there is, but there would come a point where you'd hit oversaturation. For a utility our size, depreciation, your largest single depreciation expense, if we were looking at a substation, once you get to that level, you'd never really go beyond it. An operating account is two to three months. You would never have six to nine months in it. There's no rule on it, but there would come a point where once you pick your top goal and you're there, there's no point in going beyond it. You know, rate shock, there's no need to keep sixty million dollars in rate shock. Once you hit a certain amount that you've identified that this is stable, you stay there. I mean, you could put ten, five hundred million dollars in there, but that you don't need. So I don't believe there's a statutory limit, but you'll hit sort of that best practice. You'll hit what's required to maintain the credit rating you want. And then you analyze that, okay, we really don't necessarily more than X or Y in there.
Right. So I asked that question because I would, I guess I would expect that once we get into each of these lines, that there'll be some sort of recommendation of what we want to build to so that we can divert to other line items at some point if we hit that that number that we want to. I'm not sure who's advising the light department on its finances, but I would like to see whatever those recommendations are as part of the discussion. Second, on the operating account, it is if that's a day-to-day, you know, in-and-out type of count, what happens at the end of the fiscal year to anything that's left over in that, in that budget?
So that's effectively your fund balance. It stays there. The average of our peer utilities is seven point eight million dollars in their operating account, nor with zero, because we co-mingle everything with the town's general fund. So just like any business, it's your below-the-line fund balance that you wouldn't tap if necessary. Having that operating account will allow us to let the light department function as its own fund. It'll also make sure that the general fund stands on its own, which it needs to. And then if there's any cross-subsidization of funds, that it's clearly identified, and the money is transferred from one side to the other in the appropriate manner.
Okay. What financial information do you folks get regarding companies we, we purchase power from?
Jimmy, do you want to take that? I'm not, you're talking about what we ask for when we?
Well, you had mentioned during the first part of your discussion, Tony, about we never know when something may go down and we have to spend a lot more to purchase power. I was just kind of wondering, are there any financials that are either submitted to the state or to you as a purchaser from these companies to ensure that, hey, we can see something coming, or there is no concern?
Yeah, so we're not talking about sort of a financial shutdown of a company. We're talking you have a fire at a gas plant, and that plant and that asset is out of production, and that's something that nobody can provide for, and that much energy is just no longer able to go into the grid, and it causes rates to go through the roof everywhere.
Okay. My last one, Mr. Chairman, is potentially, is there any positive impact that the proposed solar panel that we're trying to put onto the old covered dump play into our finances?
Yeah, Jimmy, do you want, I'll have Jimmy take that. In brief, it's a good chance to purchase power cheap. Jimmy?
Yeah, what we plan on doing is putting an RFP out and basically buy the power from whoever installs it. It will be owned by a third party. They'll own it, operate it, and we will pay a fixed amount of money per kilowatt hour for whatever comes out of that solar away. The good thing about it is it is behind our transmission line, behind the meter, so we do get some other benefits from it. Besides just the energy, we'll get some capacity relief and some transmission cost relief. Because we won't be bringing the power over the transmission line. That the beauty of having any asset on this, on the side of the meter.
And Jimmy, will the battery storage issue play a part into what is generated at, from those solar panels?
We, we are looking at that. We haven't, the batteries cost keeps coming down so rapidly. It's a challenge to how much money you want to invest if you wait a little on it. There's another, not trying to confuse the issue, but there's another issue that I just wrote. There's actually a meeting coming up with, they're discussing reconstitution of peaks. So the peak sharing generated that were used in the past, the ISO, we're looking at possibly reconstituting. You know, they wouldn't go backwards, so it certainly wouldn't affect us back-wise, but they're looking at maybe adding those peaks back on to different people's capacity cost. So a lot of the benefits basically would go away. So that's another thing before we go too far. We want to have a better grip on what the rules are going to be with the ISO. The ISO stands for the Independent System Operating of New England. They're the people that run the transmission grid in New England, in the northeast.
Thank you, Jimmy, Tony, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things for Mr. Mizuko or Jimmy or Kevin or Dan. It sounds then that it is advisable at some point to to have a separate operating account for the light department, and you didn't say this, but you also have a separate depreciation account. I guess both under the auspices of the town treasurer, but sort of separate. We did, we developed enough fiscal discipline within the light department to raise the, we raised the bond rating, right? We all want that, don't we?
Correct.
Okay. So now what that means, though, is that over the long run, your predecessor, Mr. Mizuko, used to say, it's easy to run a town when you have a light department kicking back four million dollars to help you do it. But our goal over the long term is to not, is to not be relying on the light department for, to mitigate our obligations on the general government side. Is that correct?
Sort of. Let me explain. So depreciation, there's an item on your agenda about depreciation. Statute requires us to take our depreciation fund, that it needs to be in a separate account and have its interest accrued specifically to depreciation. We've always kept an accounting entry, but everything's been in our similar, our Sentry lockbox. So as we're trying to sort of separate out our finances with the light department and clarify everything, we do want to make sure we're meeting the statutory requirement of depreciation. We think that by doing that, we now have an opportunity to possibly get a little bit more money locally, which we'll discuss on that one issue. The light department is, makes a return, and it gives that return to the town. That's allowed under statute. We're able to do that. We don't want to get away from that because that's the benefit the ratepayers or the benefit the taxpayers get from owning the light department. What we do want to do is make sure that we're not benefiting from the light department in a way that we're not paying for it. It's always been beneficial to our cash flow to have the light department cash flow, but the general government, if you will, and that includes the town, the schools, so the municipality benefits from the use of the light department's cash flow. It really should be paying the light department for that. Now, I know people might say, well, at the end of the day, it's all the same, and you're looking to cost the taxpayer or the ratepayer, but proper accounting and making sure that our utilities in its best financial position means that if one entity is supposed to be paying the other one, we want it to be clear, we want it to be separate. So we're not looking to change the fact that the light department returns money to the town. We're just looking to clean the accounting. If there's a cost on one side or the other, we should be bearing that cost. Depreciation is an example. We've been accruing depreciation of the general fund. It's really supposed to be getting accrued to the depreciation account. Just want to make sure we're practicing good accounting, that's all.
Okay, very good. By the way, Jimmy, question for you. Bond that's going to go off the books in a few years. Aren't there two of them? Are there two big hits that we took out around two thousand and three?
On, on the loan, yeah, yeah, there was the initial initial payment, and then the final judgment basically based on interest. But they do about a year apart to pay the loan.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When you were describing the great, different entities, Mr. Hissah's question about a limit, isn't there a limit on how much the light department is allowed to make cap?
Yeah, so that's correct. That's what it turns over to the town. That's what's limited. It's based on eight percent of the plant value. That number won't change, other than the plant value changes, or we could decide to make it seven or six or five. So the light department deciding to put a million dollars in an account doesn't factor into that eight percent that the light department is allowed under statute to generate, that all utilities have a statutory number. Our municipal number is eight percent. It's different in the private sector. So that doesn't affect if we say we need to put X dollars into this account. That's all what it costs to run the utility.
Isn't there a state-imposed limitation or governmental-imposed limitation?
No.
I think, wasn't there, Mr. Plasko, before?
Yeah, what I'm saying, Mrs. Donahue, is that eight percent is a, that's a profit, so that's a net. That number is limited, but the fact that we need to spend a million dollars here or there on this fund or that fund doesn't factor into that eight percent. That's the total cost to run the utility. That eight percent is what can be turned over to the municipality. That number is set in stone.
Yeah, we can't make, we can't make twenty percent if we wanted to. We can't make more than that eight percent.
Right, that's, that's, so that is a cap, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's different from those other accounts they were discussing.
Okay, and then in regard to operational costs, operational costs have been doing okay for a long time. So when we talk about opening, opening up a separate account, it would be good if we had a real strong list of the benefits and, you know, the, just the profit's not so good, too. We're going to have to put a lot of information into that to make it worth it. Don't you think?
Absolutely.
And in regard to purchasing power, I think, Mr. Collins, don't we rely a lot on the company that you have that helps you with the purchasing power? Could you be kind enough to describe that to the people?
Yes, we have a contract with a company called Energy New England, who basically manages our portfolio, brings us different opportunity, power purchasing opportunities. He's helping us meet requirement for the renewable energy portion. So that's why we keep on buying these little wind, you know, the wind deals, the water, the water deals, those types of deals, so that will be set up for the you know, for the legislation. They're, they're planning on passing legislation that will require by a certain date, you have to be a certain percentage, not non-carbon, and we're we're planning on that. We're getting ready for that, and they're also the ones that help us plan our budgeting for our purchase power, you know, on what we expect to see for cost going forward, you know, on an annual basis.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Orange.
Thank you. Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very quickly, Mr. Mizuko, would replacing something like the middle school, an older building with a newer one that's presumably more energy-efficient, would that ever have any impact, a positive one, on our credit rating, or is it not necessarily something that they factor in?
So in a funny way, that may not necessarily be a good thing for the light department if it's going to use less, selling less energy. So, and that's a challenge that every electric industry or every electric utility faces. We're all about conservation, but we also sell electricity.
Yeah.
But the status of the light department's credit rating and the town's credit rating will impact that cost of the, of the middle school to us.
Right. So in your presentation, when you were saying something like Moderna, you know, that was, that was a positive for us, so.
If we were running the current one, that's a net big customer. That would certainly be beneficial.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So a talk of caps and so forth, we have at least one item that is required, a minimum number is required. It's depreciation. That's what, three percent? Mr. Collins, is there any other that we're forced to meet like that?
Not, not that I'm aware of. Another
So that, so that's a minimum. And otherwise, as Mr. Mizuko said earlier, it's only your, your goals and your business practices, stuff, how high you go on any of these. All right, anything further? Then there are two other items, and one was briefly discussed on our agenda that we probably should speak about now, while you have your team together, and Attorney Pollak's still with us. That's number two on your new business for the board members that I'm discussing. And A is light department depreciation, and B is light department rate transfer from unused funds. You want to take those in any particular order, Mr. Mizuko?
Yeah, I'll start with the depreciation one, since we had already begun discussing that. As we're trying to modernize our financial structure, and we're trying to make sure we're following all of the different regulatory frameworks, we've come to the conclusion that we do need to place depreciation in a separate account. We've never done that in practice. It's always been an accounting entry. So we're looking at going ahead and doing that. However, what it's done is presented the opportunity to possibly see if we want to keep some of that money locally. We currently use as a number of, you know, we use a number of different institutions, some of which are local, but it's in our Sentry Bank lockbox, which is where we do most of our banking services from. So we're thinking, as we look at making sure that depreciation is a standalone account, would we want to move all or perhaps a portion of that over to a local institution so that we can keep a little bit more of our money locally, if you will, being that we do promote ourselves as the local folks? So it's, on the one hand, good accounting practice. On the other hand, it's an opportunity to possibly do a little bit more local business.
Okay, anything further on that?
Just that we're presenting to the board, I don't think there's a decision that's made, that needs to be made tonight, per se. The board is responsible for the direction of depreciation investment, separate from all other funds. So the board has the authority to direct where it's invested, as long as it's consistent with the state statute for investing. They're low-yield instruments, as you know, required of state statute. So we think we can move some of the money locally. We'd like to. There's certainly some drawbacks. On the one hand, by having one single fund balance, we never run into a cash flow problem. So there could be potentially a cash flow issue, which is something that most, probably more than half the cities and towns in Massachusetts have a seasonal cash flow, and you do have to pay, you do short-term borrowing to be able to cover it. We have, having monthly bills actually makes it a lot easier. So we're not certain that the removal of this five million dollars from the lockbox fund would actually have an impact on cash flow, but it's a possibility. Because interest rates are so low, we'd be keeping less on the count with our Sentry Bank lockbox. That could lead to a couple thousand dollars in costs for the town. However, we're supposed to be separating depreciation anyway, not using it for cash flow. So you could make an argument that we don't want to spend that money here, but we should be otherwise paying the light department for use of those funds.
All right, I'll open up in a minute. Let me make a couple of comments. You gave us some good information here in our packet. And from Attorney Pollak, there's quite an explanation as to ability to possibly make a decision on transferring funds. But for myself, I'm one hundred percent philosophically to wanting to invest in the local banks, the banks that give so much back to the community in many ways, financial ways. But we also have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we're doing this right. So far, the information we've been given is just general, like, let's do this, we can do it. And there may not be any negative effects, but we don't know that. I want to see that. I want to see what the rate difference is between one bank and another, whether there is bank charges that are going to be affected by the fact that we might move some money. Is that going to make the other bank? We keep a balance so well that they, something that their charges that they're waiving now may be added, and we have to assume that cost. Want a real analysis of what we're doing. Hopefully, it will come out so that it allows us to go forward. I want to do that personally, but I'm not doing it until I feel comfortable that we've really looked at the numbers and know what we're doing.
We can certainly get the board across benefit analysis.
Okay, anyone else? Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mizuko, in backing up what Mr. Plasko said, I'm having a hard time trying to understand why a bank would charge us money to put money in the bank. So I need you to really teach me about that when you go over this stuff.
We certainly can. It's, there's always a cost to banking services, just like your own checking account, if you think about it, and we have a lot of, we use the bank quite a bit, whatever bank we're using, for, again, hundreds of millions of dollars a year. Similar to your own checking account, where if you keep a certain amount in there, there's no fee. But if you don't keep a certain amount in there, there might be a most checking account of a monthly charge, but there's an ATM charge. So it's not uncommon for treasury functions to have banking costs based on the number of dollars you keep in there. And one of the challenges we're facing, and this is everywhere, is interest rates are so low, so the money we keep on account from our daily sweeps, it's just, you don't generate the interest like you used to, where the banks used to say, hey, listen, you guys have ten million dollars in the bank, and we're making a ton of money off of that. But with interest being so low, they're additionally not making cash off the cash. They're making off the banking charges. So, you know, we pay one way or another.
But that's, that's a huge fee for putting money in a bank.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone, Mr. Ja?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tony, in your memo, which had a lot of good information, and in general, I am in favor uh, I am in favor of using local banks as long as it's practical and and wise. Um, in in your letter, you had stated that feel free to call, uh, Tom McQuade or Mark Good to have a discussion with them. And I did, I I spent a lot of time with Mr. Good to to try to u- understand a lot of the issues. And he brought up a lot of good points, and and I'm not sure this is the the place where we go over every question or every answer. Um, but we're missing the town treasurer's perspective of this with the documentation that was submitted. And I'm not saying that anyone is lying or miscategorizing the effects of what may happen. I'm just saying, I think Mark has a different perspective that's worth taking into account as we try to formulate what we want to do. Uh, and the the chairman's right, when we do have fiduciary responsibility to make sure we're doing the, making the best decisions for the town. No, it's not my part of money, it's not your part of money. Uh, if I want to lose it, okay, that's fine, but I certainly don't feel that way for for the town. Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that, uh, we actually have a just a very small team, work on this and come back with all the issues that you have raised, and there's a lot more, so that we have all the information in front of us and we can make an informed decision that's based on both law, common sense, practicality in what we can achieve as a, as a town, if we can make it benefit, uh, uh, locally or or not. But I think there are a lot of issues. We could spend the whole night talking about this because, you know, I I know I have, I I had a ton of questions, and I I think it needs to be shared.
All right, I think that, um, when we get the, uh, report, the information back, it's going to automatically take into consideration Mr. Good's, uh, concerns, and he should be part of the team to make sure they are all expressed and considered. I think Mr. Mizuko mentioned, you know, management team gave us the report. Probably should be Mr. Mizuko, Mr. Good, Mr. McQuade, and maybe one member of the board to sit in and and make sure all our concerns are going to be answered when that report comes back to us. Uh, at least that'd be my suggestion. Anyone else?
And I concur with that suggestion, too.
Any other questions on this matter, Mr. Lane?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I would just support Mr. Hajar's, um, uh, hi- his proposal just because I do think this is a really complex issue, and, uh, just want to make sure that we do all of our due diligence and make the right choice. And it's it seems like a a smart idea to me.
Okay, want to make that informal motion? Mr. Hajar?
Yes, I do. Then we establish second.
So that would be, uh, what I I basically recited, a committee of, uh, task force of, uh, administration and one board member, and, uh, get us all the full details and analysis of, uh, what this proposal might, uh, mean to us financially.
Yes.
This, Mr. Hajar, I'm sorry, Mr. Lane.
Uh, thanks, just to amend that, um, if you were willing to add another board member, yeah, I would, I'd be willing to to participate. Um, if you, if you amended it to 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 board members.
I'm I'm, yes, I'm I'm in agreement with that, that's, I mean, with that.
Okay, this is done here.
I would, I was going to volunteer as well.
Well, we're going to only get, only going to get two, we can't get three on there, uh, so, um.
We we can decide that later, though, right?
Well, let's decide, the board can decide, or you can authorize the chairman to make the appointment, so we can decide right now, whatever you want to do. Right now, the motion's to appoint two, how are they going to get appointed?
Will that we let the chair make the appointment?
Okay. Everyone all right with that? On the motion, Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that's unanimous, so we'll ask that task force to, uh, dig into those facts and get back to the board, uh, as soon as it's practical to gather it all and, uh, put it together. You have another item, Mr. Mizuko?
Uh, yes, uh, transfer from unused funds. As we've continued cleaning up our accounting with the conversion to a new software system, we have approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, I can get the exact amount, in two different accounts, uh, dating back to two thousand seven and two thousand eleven. These are light department funds, to be clear. Uh, there were settlements from rate cases that were put aside, we believe, to either go into the new substation, uh, or into the new building. For whatever reason, that didn't happen because we've been sitting on this money for nine, uh, years in one account and, uh, almost working on the other. So to just clean up the books and move the money somewhere, the recommendation is that we move it into the rate shock fund. There's really no other purpose we could use it for. So it's been sitting there, and that's the safest sort of parking place for it. And that's our recommendation.
So moved. Mr. Collins, do you know where these, uh, what the settlements were?
Yeah, well, the first settlement was a tran- I believe a transmission case. It actually goes back to two thousand one. It was two hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred dollars. Then in two thousand thirteen, there was another, uh, money put into the same account, which is hundred thirty-six thousand six forty-nine ninety-five. And and then, for some reason, in two thousand fourteen, there was another small deposit, which I think is probably just another forty-five dollars we put in there. But the total, the actual total number to be voting on is, uh, three eight nine oh nine four nine five. So it's three hundred eighty-nine thousand oh ninety-four ninety-five cents.
Did I hear you make a motion, Mr. Donahue?
I did, I did.
Is that seconded? Mr. Hajar? Discussion, Mr. Maloney?
I I vote very, just for the the rate shock fund right now, Mr. Mizuko, I think you said about four point six million dollars in it?
Yes, sir.
To put this three hundred and ninety thousand in with that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I can give you the balance of what the total will be with this in. It will be five million oh twenty-two oh ninety-four oh eight will be the balance.
I know you've covered this, Mr. Mizuko, but, uh, wh- what is, do you have a recommended balance, given the number of areas we have, et cetera? We're at five million now, where do you want to be?
For, uh, rate stabilization fund, uh, north of ten, we would want to be able to absorb a substantial impact. I mean, the, just briefly, maintaining a lower fund balance, you have a big problem, you can solve it for a month, but that problem might go on for twelve or twenty-four or thirty-six months.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, Eric, anything further, we'll put it to a vote, Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, that's unanimous, that will be done. Uh, thank you, gentlemen, anything else, Mr. Mizuko?
Uh, not on these items, sir.
Attorney Pollock, thank you for, uh, joining us, and, uh, we watch you off the hook tonight.
You're welcome, thank you for having me.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, you guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. You can stay if you'd like, but, uh, feel free to leave.
Thank you.
All right, um, so that finishes up all our light department discussions for tonight. Excuse me, uh, first item on our new business is appointment by the chair of the MBTA advisory appointments, which will be Mr. Joseph Collins as our Noah designee and Mr. Paul Alkeotis as our alternate designee. So that's information. How in favor, Mrs. Donahue?
Um, I just wanted to take a minute on the new, on the, um, representative to the MBTA advisory board. Tonight is a historic night in county. Uh, Franny O'Brien, who had been a member of the county commissioners for many, many years in the sixties, the late sixties, he was the selectman in Gettem, and he was the Gettem representative to the MBTA board. So I just wanted to take a minute to wish Franny O'Brien thank you from all of us here in Norwood for all of his years of service to the North as a county commissioner and all of his years of service to the Commonwealth. Thank you, Franny O'Brien.
Thank you. Anything further? Mr. Lane, file? Mrs. Donahue? Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Here votes aye, that will be filed. John Gober, Norwood Mustang Hockey Club, a request for a car wash on Saturday, September twenty-six, twenty twenty, and then you miss it a lot.
Motion to approve.
Second?
I get it.
Mr. Lane, second, anything further? How in favor, Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that's passed unanimously. Attorney Nicholas Samante has submitted for approval and application for a pledge of license and a pledge of inventory on behalf of Yankee Spirits, Inc., at nine fifty Providence Highway Turnpike. Uh, James J. Giulio, Ju- Giuliano, uh, the manager. Um, this is a pledge to Rockland, Rockland Trust. Mrs. Donahue?
I abstain.
You abstain, okay, thank you. Any questions or comments or motions to approve or disapprove?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Anything, anything further? We'll vote, Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion passes for nothing with one abstention. Mr. Manager, anything additional?
Just skip number four, Mr. Chairman.
Skip number four?
I skip one?
Yep.
Oh, I did. Thank you very much.
Number four.
Yes, thank you. Revival Church of Phoenicians, two ninety Vanderbilt Ave. They made a request to use the town common for a church service on Sunday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty, from four P M. to eight P M. They had one comment on that, one question. They indicate on their application that they're going to, they're serving food, but then it appears it's just selling and containers to go. I wonder if we need to direct them to the Board of Health to check on whether that be approved in order, what they need to do to, for it to be part of the approval?
I'd recommend that.
Sound all right with everyone, when we make that?
Yeah. Yes. Good idea.
So motion to approve with that stipulation and and requirement that the Board of Health approve whatever it is they're doing regarding food.
So moved.
And I think, uh, Mr. Yes, Mr. Hajar?
Yeah, just a question on on the numbers, I think Christina can help us here, is, is it fifty?
Yeah, about fifty.
Okay.
All right, we'll put it to a vote, Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko says aye, that is unanimous. I have one, uh, additional one that's come in that would require, uh, action, particularly if we're, well, approve or deny, so the people know the board's position. Um, prior to the next time we're going to meet, they're going to have this, uh, if they're allowed, they're going to have this event just a couple of days after our next meeting. It's, uh, come to us from a local resident. They're looking to host a birthday party behind N Dean, uh, on Saturday, September twelfth, from one P M. to three P M. I understand the area that they're asking for is we're doing behind the Haas Pool, and you've got the, uh, little playground area, and then you've got the two ponds. I believe they're talking about hosting it at that area. We can choose to, uh, approve, deny, or turn over to, uh, Mr. Travis, Mr. Mizuko, so you get the more specific details and make a proper decision. What's the wish of the board? Mr. Mr. Maloney?
Oh, um, I'll make a motion to approve. I was just flicking my pen.
Oh, I'm sorry. You got to be careful. I'll step forward. Uh, any other comments, Mr. Hajar?
Well, I was, I was going to say, if I could amend Tom's motion to, uh, have the chair approve pending, uh, the more specific review, uh, by Tony and his team to get the information requested.
Okay, so generally approved unless the chair and review find some concern and then he can deny?
Yes.
Okay, is that all right, Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Okay, anything further on that motion? Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Here votes aye, and that is unanimous. Thank you for that catch, sorry I missed that. Now, Mr. Mizuko, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, I think I've spoken quite a bit, uh, enough tonight, just, um, an update that, um.
All right, don't go on any longer, that's enough, I heard you.
Dean Street Bridge is on time and, uh, on budget as well.
But, thank you very much. All right, any other new business, uh, before we adjourn, Mrs. Donahue?
Uh, no, thank you.
I'll think, anyone else? Mr. Malone?
Briefly, the, uh, the steering committee for the North one hundred and fiftieth birthday did meet for the first time this past Thursday. Uh, and still, we will let the word go forth from this time in place all about the things we've done. Uh, we're meeting again on September twenty-fourth, but we've begun putting together a rudimentary calendar. And, uh, we put together, we've decided on certain subcommittees and other elements of organization. So it was a good meeting, we're meeting again on the twenty-fourth of September. Thank you very much.
Thank you, glad to hear that. Mr. Lane, Mr. Hajar, anything? I have one, Mr. Hajar?
I do. And, um, I I do want to read it, uh, if I can, Mr. Chairman, because I just want to make sure I emphasize certain points. And it has to do with, um, you know, ethics, and I'm not trying to drag us down or anything, but we have gotten, I know we've had once submitted email, I received another and a couple of calls asking about it. So, um, I did want to publicly acknowledge it, but, um, I know there there have been emails and phone calls, uh, regarding the decision rendered by the State Ethics Commission. Um, I can only speak for myself and say to all town residents, I take the issue about ethics very seriously. There are many, many issues that come across the selectmen's desk. I believe we all look at each issue to the best we can in order to make the best decisions for the town of Norwood. To me, I have filed two conflict of interest statements with the town clerk's office after speaking with and getting instructions from the State Ethics Commission's attorney. Both times, I made a public statement on camera and to my colleagues on the board so that they're fully aware of the state's decisions and what the issues are about. These are challenges, challenging times for everyone, but you should also believe that your elected representatives are acting in a fair, open, and transparent manner with all issues that come before us to avoid any potential charges of pandering ethics or favoritism. In my dealings with the current members of the great board and only recently with, uh, Matt and Helen for a few months, I have confidence we're all acting that way. That my pledge that I will continue to act in the best interest of Norwood by acting in a fair, open, transparent manner. So I thank you for, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to read that.
Thank you. All right, I have one announcement. Uh, you know, we've been in search for an administrative assistant to help Mrs. Mul- Mulverhill out here in the office and, uh, the board in general. So I'd like to announce the appointment of Jess, uh, how do we pronounce her last name? Joseph, Joseph, Jess Joseph Wick as a new administrative assistant to the board. The process for hiring administrative assistants was, uh, I think, conducted very well under the leadership of our H R Director Molly Keen and H R Journalist Kelly Spencer. This is Donahue, this is Mulverhill, and myself participated in that process. Uh, there were thirty-seven applicants, of whom eight were selected for interviews. Uh, second interviews were conducted with three of those individuals. And, uh, Mrs. Zoic was, uh, offered the position, she has accepted. Verification, background checks, and so forth have, uh, come back, um, positive. And she's intent, we intend to have her start working for us on Tuesday, September eighth. And we're very happy to have her, and I'm certain she will do a great job for us. I just wanted to make that announcement, we have added to our staff. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. Um, could you tell the town about opening up the town hall, please?
About opening what? Oh, Mr. Mizuko, could you, could you reset?
On the recommendation of the health department, what we'll be doing is we'll be open by appointment only starting next week, which is sort of how we've always been operating in general. But, uh, just call ahead, uh, reach the department that you need, and they'll schedule an appointment for you to come in, um, or be able to take care of you otherwise. So, uh, open next week by appointment. It's our own version of a hybrid model.
Those people be able to come and pay the bills at the counter?
Uh, it's by appointment only, so we recommend that you place your bills in the box in the bank. There's simply no read, uh, our COVID numbers are going up in town, and nobody believes, certainly the staff at Town Hall, that there's no reason to do it. So we know it's a personal preference of some people, but technology and the mail have allowed otherwise to place. Um, it's very difficult to manage this building and maintain the statutorily required safe distances for employees. We will have no meeting rooms available, at least through the end of the year, We will have no meeting rooms available, at least through the end of the year, because we have to put workstations in all of our available meeting rooms, to, and, and make sure that we can have employees come to work and maintain the required amount of social distancing.
So, will the doors be open?
What's that?
Will the doors be unlocked?
By, by appointment, there'll, there'll be, the, the main door will be open, and it'll be by appointment, if you have to make a payment, we recommend you use the payment, uh, the Dropbox or mail it in.
So, which door will be open?
The ma- I'm sorry, the door by Memorial Hall.
The one that has the steps or the other one?
No, the handicap accessible one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, nothing further, Pollak to adjourn, the motion to adjourn, Mr. Stline?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, really quickly, and, and maybe I'll leave.
You're on, you're still on.
I appreciate it, uh, maybe Tony could take the lead on this, but just want to, um, give a shout out to our town clerk and her staff, and, um, with today's election, I'm, I'm sure the last couple of weeks have been pretty stressful, and so, uh, Tony, if you wanted to say anything?
Kudos to Mary Lou and her team, thousands of mail-in ballots, um, the polls, I believe, just closed a little while ago, and they've done an incredible job, and now it's, uh, they've got to finish up tonight and then on to November, um, but it's, you know, the total number of votes will likely be the same at the end of the day, it seems to be a heavy for a primary, but the workload for the clerk's office has literally tripled. Uh, same thing with November, with mail-in voting, with early voting, we tend to see the same total number of people voting, it just doubles and triples the amount of work that the staff in the clerk's office have been able to do, and they've done fantastic, as well as all of our poll workers as well, but it's an incredible undertaking.
Great.
Yeah, that's a nice point, you know, usually election day is something we, uh, applaud them for, but now it's been spread out, it's not one day, it's, it's quite a task, and they've, uh, rose into the occasion and did a great job for us. Now, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn, all in favor, Mr. Stline? Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney? Chair votes aye, that's unanimous, we are going to have next week off, uh, with the Labor Day week, and we'll be meeting the next week, uh, the 15th, I think that is, uh, and that meeting will be in person, because we're having a public hearing, and will be